We have the executive session. Steve, you want to announce the terms today?
Um, legal.
Very good.
Turn side every minute.
We have recognitions. Can I have a motion to approve, uh, per council minutes of June 1st?
Second.
Motion is second. Questions?
Yes. The minutes are actually, um, lack of the letter, biased. They're, they're not complete. Um, I find very uncomfortable that it's gone into a lot of detail with downtown, our LLC. As far as what they're willing to do and everything, but yet the residents just listen, just as follows citizens comments on their concerns, and it just lists their names. Um, I don't feel that is doing justice or correct as far as the minutes. Um, I believe that we should have a little bit of detail, all that detail put in there about downtown LLC. It's only right that we also put a little detail of what these comments, how these residents commented about. For instance, I think it's very significant that Donna Condon came and spoke about her son. That's very significant to the whole billboard issue. Uh, so I can't approve the minutes the way they are. I think that they need to be, uh, reworked. Do I have suggestions for it? Yeah, it would be long, but I think it would actually should go back to the, uh, the secretaries for whatever to rework the minutes to make them reflect more accurately what happened at the meeting and reflect what the citizens said.
And, and we've said this before, you could have called and added some stuff if you wanted before time, and they would be in for the meeting.
Yes, I could have, but I didn't.
So, okay, so we have motion, any other questions, your comments? Okay, motion is second to approve, uh, per council minutes.
I'd like to make this motion, secondary motion, that did, I think that if we do that secondary motion to return the minutes to the borough secretary so that they can be revised to properly reflect, um, what the residents thought.
I second that motion.
I was a secretary for about 10 years, and don't put comments in minutes, you only put action items. So if you look at the catalyst, it's what they were willing to do. So that's why there's so much catalyst and no, you don't put in every comment that person wants.
Okay. We actually used to, and we cut back to minutes to kind of, because if not, they were crazy. And you're correct, that's what we started to do several years ago.
Not that we don't appreciate the comments, they were all wonderful, but just in a legal sense or a board kind of rule sense, all that catalyst is all the different things they're willing to do.
Well, there is someone here that talks about discussion. After discussion, President Zero asked Tom Yuha, borough engineer, if catalyst after was reading the letter of the law. So I mean, that is thus going to a lot more detail, this sort of discussion, is not talking just about motions made and facts that were given. Um, no, and I think that this particular issue is of such a sensitive nature that I think that this warrants having more detail added to the minutes. I believe that it's very important for people to be able to look back at these minutes and see the issues, not only for, for future, you know, our future here in the borough, but also other communities that are going to be looking to us, like how things, what happened, and stuff like that. I think this could be a very educational, informative document, and I think that we need, and we owe it to the people, to have their voices be heard in black and white.
I agree.
And, and again, Ann, if you wanted to make some changes, you could have called and added.
I could have, but I didn't.
I don't understand.
Excuse me, Mr. President, that's irrelevant.
We have a motion is second, all favor of Ann's motion?
Secondary motion.
Yeah, secondary motion, I'm sorry. Okay, opposed? Okay, now we'll go back to the first of all, favor of the original motion to approve the minutes. Opposed? Okay, motion caps. Okay, Steve? Thank you, everyone. Um, yeah, we'll do, citizens be heard, and then we'll do conditional use here. Um, citizens be heard. Brad, up, come on up, make the dress, podium.
But now to the time.
For the conditional use here.
Wait for that.
Okay.
Sir, from the Borough building, East Redmond Township. Um, I have a problem with the approved council meeting minutes, not just from recent, but the past 12 months longer. The presumed official minutes, a summary that is usually written sometime after a council meeting, have become so vague that anyone who were to request a copy of any of these minutes would wonder first what the residents, what the residents were commenting or complaining about, why council members did not respond to questions and complaints, and why there were no explanations of discussions among council members regarding new and deference and before voting on resolutions and ordinances. But for an example, we'll go back to what I have on video from the last council meeting. Georgie O'Malley stood up with three different issues, citizens to be heard. First was, what's the status of the pedestrian crosswalk on Lancaster Avenue? Mr. Sullins explained that PennDOT never came back with a formal approval, and he personally felt it was concerned that there, it was going to be right in the middle of the curve of the road. Mr. O'Malley explained that it had been about five years since the request was made, and the crosswalk was not at a curve, but on the road, which it would be between the parking lot next to Park Alley and the Pocket Park known as Armor Alley, that's a straight road. Now, to change just a little bit, Georgie O'Malley asked Mr. Sullins about the pedestrian crosswalk that would, that would go from the parking lot on one side to the Pocket Park on the other. He had requested a crosswalk several years ago. Had borough manager Sullins heard anything from PennDOT about its approval. Mr. Sullins said that he had not received a formal approval from PennDOT, and will write to them again. Is that too much to ask? Now, next, Mr. Sullins brought up the algae in First Lake. Now, actually, it's an embarrassing and dangerous situation with the growth of algae affecting all the lakes in Carden Park. But what is the true reason for the council's lack of concern for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens living here and visitors to, to the borough? Prior to 2009, all the parks were maintained with care, all obstructions in the waterways were removed, invasive vegetation was also removed to allow native wildflowers, shrubs, and trees that tends to grow. Today, the stream in Carden Park is obstructed with damp trees and invasive vegetation. The waterways that are now, are now lined with invasive vines, poison hemlock and Japanese knotweed and other invasive plant. There are several obstructions in the waterways in Carden Park and Marinelli Park. What is council going to do about the stagnation of the waterways, especially with more species of mosquitoes visiting us with stagnant waters everywhere? I won't go into a detail of what had been requested at a previous meeting, and it was very nice that you, that actually, Ms. Jack has said something about barley, barley, um, yeah, thank you. You mentioned that, you wanted, you know, it wasn't there. Now, the last issue Mr. O'Malley brought up is something you probably had heard from other business owners in the borough that you had heard complain about. The Arts Festival used up apparently a, a complete parking lot, and there were no parking, there was no parking available for business owners, their employees, and customers. I believe Main Street put this together, had Main Street conferred with the local business owners before the big event in the parking lot. Was anyone else aware of the full plans of this, of this festival? Now, to be fair, now, the Main Street group does work as an arm of the borough in terms of helping the council get things done. And yes, council members are the elected, are elected by the residents, and they are supposed to represent their constituents. Main Street and council tend to agree with whatever it is that they've already agreed upon prior to any council meeting.
Sarah, if you don't mind, we normally do five minutes, I give them to six, so people kind of...
I am, I have on my last sentence.
Thank you.
So, of course, they are very pleased with what they've done, and as representatives of the borough, as young, and the residents, has council done anything that would make their constituents feel good about their decisions?
Thank you very much. Any more citizens?
Hi, all. My name is Kelly Mayne, 304 North Lake Drive.
Kelly, yes, they know, we are going to talk about the building that you, you would say that...
The listed parts, that's why.
But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna...
We are gonna talk about that.
Yes, we're gonna have great things, so we're gonna give you an update on it.
I do have a question based off of the meeting minutes.
Are you gonna give her an opportunity to speak at that time?
Yes, I will, but we're gonna give you an update on what we're, what we're doing, so I don't know if that will answer any questions, but if you want to go ahead now, you go right ahead.
Oh, okay, but, um, going off of that, will I get the chance to ask questions? Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, you said, "Yes, she can." That's what you said, "Yes."
You didn't answer, so thank you. Um, with the meeting minutes, you approved, did you approve the citizen, did you mention that there were four citizens that spoke in the citizens to be heard section? Or was that neglected from the meeting minutes?
Yes, so, yeah, sister.
Okay. Because I know that Donna Condon spoke during the citizens to be heard section, and I think you just decided to lump it with the downtown passer. She was, she was definitely, she talked before that, so I do agree with these two, that that information needs to be presented.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, and you'll have a minute, I promise. I said you'll have a minute when we get down. Anyone else? All righty, we're gonna jump down, we're gonna go pass to the third, and we're gonna do the conditional use hearing, because we have a lot of people agreeing with what we have. All righty, Mark, you wanna...
We're gonna open the hearing. This is a conditional use application before Borough Council. Dr. John Ricardo, for real estate located at 361-363 East Lancaster Avenue. The proposed improvements are an addition of a 3,500 square foot one-story building as well as a parking lot. Since this is a conditional use application, I'm gonna mark some exhibits for the record. Exhibit B1 is the application. Exhibit B2 is public notice of this hearing. Exhibit B3 is the affidavit of publication in the Daily Local News of the public notice. Exhibit B4 is a certificate of posting of the property of the notice. Exhibit B5 is certification of mailing to properties that are required to receive notice by mail. And exhibit B6 is a downtown borough planning commission memorandum on the application concerning their meeting on April 12, 2016.
And quickly, Mark, explain how the hearing is going, how we're gonna run it, people, that could be a party to it, that could speak with you.
Well, it's a hearing, we do have a court reporter, so please keep that in mind if someone wants to call or make a comment. If anyone would like to be made a party to the application, make a request for party status. Party status is reserved for individuals who have property that has a particular relationship to the property that's the subject of this application, such as living in the vicinity or owning property across the street or very close to, such that you may have been affected by the use. Party status, you don't have to be a party to ask questions, you don't have to be a party to make statements. You would receive the decision if you were, you requested party status and it was granted, and you would have an opportunity to dispute the decision if you weren't happy with it. So we do have forms here for individuals to fill out. If anyone would like to request party status, I would just request that you raise your hand and make that request on the record. Sir?
Request party status?
Name?
Ms. Bruton. Or is that where these lights are at? So requesting party status.
Okay.
I can't...
Next door name.
We have an application to get filled out. Mr. Jarris, do you have any questions or any objection?
No objection.
Okay. Um, we'll just make a request that you fill this out.
She waits at the end, really, I just wasn't sure.
You can just take this.
Anybody else want to add something? All right. Go ahead, Mark.
Hearing done, um, the procedure would be to turn it over to the applicant to present evidence on the conditional use.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, you can, of course.
Good evening, my name is John Jarris, I am the applicant's counsel, and I'd like to hand up to Ms. Felton and Esther, she'd be so kind to pass these down. They're previously marked exhibits for the application, for applicant's exhibits A1 through A5, and we'll be making reference to them throughout the evening, and I have one for Mr. Bruton as well. The property is located at 361-363 East Lancaster Avenue, and is located in R4, single-family, two-family, multi-family residential district. The property comprises 30,650 square feet, which is just under an acre, and is currently improved with a converted residential structure being utilized for office use on the first floor, and apartment use, two apartments from the second floor. That's the existing building in the property. The applicant's, and property owner is Lair House, L-E-H-R, second word, House, L-L-C, insisting of Dr. John and Heather Ricardo seated to my left. The applicant proposes the construction of a second one-story building of approximately 3,400 square feet to be used for medical office use with additional parking facilities, landscaping, and lighting. The applicant is before the Borough Council requesting conditional use approval this evening in accordance with sections 287, 32, capital D as in David, 2, and 287, 107, capital G, 1 of the zoning ordinance. The first section I referenced has to do with medical professional office use permitted by conditional use. The second section references a fee in lieu of parking. In other words, the applicant can not provide a full complement of parking. Your zoning ordinance has a provision that a fee in lieu of those parking spaces, or a portion of those parking spaces, can be offered. Just a brief history, we filed this application several months ago, and I believe it was in May, if my recollection serves me right, that we were before the Borough Planning Commission. We presented the conditional use application at that time, and Borough Planning Commission recommended an approval of that conditional use application. Then in June, this month, on June 7th, we were before the zoning hearing board requesting variance relief from three sections of the ordinance, 287, 48J, and K, and 287, 78. Essentially, they had to do with...
Did you read the notes?
Sure, absolutely. 287, 48, capital J, 287, 48, capital K, and 287, 78, buffering and screening. 287, 48J had to do with the zoning ordinance, our zoning ordinance establishing a minimum height, not a maximum, a minimum height of two stories or 30 feet. This essentially, as you'll hear in a moment, is a one-story building, although if you take the measurements, we do exceed 30 feet, but we requested variance nevertheless. K had to do with a 10-foot buffer requirement that was reduced to 5 feet, 5 as opposed to 10. And 287, 78 had to do with buffering and screening. Our landscape architect testified at the hearing that there was a very aggressive complement, if you will, of landscaping and screening required in your zoning ordinance for the strict application. He presented detailed testimony and plan to illustrate that we were offering less than that full complement, and the zoning hearing board rendered relief against all pre-requested variances. Lastly, I believe it was June 8th, excuse me, June 8th, we were before Dr. Ricardo and our architect, were before the Borough Historic Commission for review. It's my understanding, Dr. Chris, that the Borough Historic Commission recommended approval? They did, okay. So, um, we, we traveled a little bit of a road to get here before you for conditional use. As I explained at the zoning hearing board hearing, if in fact this Borough Council were sufficient to approve this conditional use, the application doesn't stop here, it will continue with a land development application, which is a fully engineered plan that our civil engineer prepares and submits to the borough for review and approval as well. So, just wanted to make that point. We essentially have two witnesses this evening, they are Dr. John Ricardo and David Gibbons, our civil engineer, and Borough's council permission if they can stand that we so want together.
Absolutely, of course.
Do you both swear from testimony that we did not have a change in the document?
Please. So if the Borough Council has no questions, I would call Dr. Ricardo, who's the first one.
Is there any questions, council, right now, from this room?
I have, as far as the zoning, the variance, I don't see any, do we have any exhibit in our packet from the zoning hearing board, am I just missing it?
I don't see any. I don't know if you have anything in your packet, ma'am, but I'm in possession of a letter dated June 8th from Jay Fisher, the zoning hearing board solicitor, stating, "Dear Mr. Jarris, this letter will confirm that the zoning hearing board at the conclusion of the hearing of October 27, 2016, granted the relief requested in your client's application. A formal decision will be issued within 45 days, as required by law."
And it was issued within 45 days?
It has not yet been issued.
Not, so you did not...
This was the letter approved.
Or is that part of the exhibits, if you maybe wanted to put that in?
Absolutely, I thought the borough would have this in their possession, but I only have one copy, I'd be happy to...
Does it say copy on this, did we copy on?
See, Thomas, Tom, you, why, A, I guess.
This copy is Tom, we should have it.
Just hope you have that, and I don't believe I have it.
Okay, yeah, it's entered to the record, and we'll, we'll...
Sure.
Make copies, make sure everybody gets one, is that okay?
If you want a copy, seven, that'd be fine, John.
Another question for you, do you have any other plans that show the surrounding properties? Because this is a, you know, a good rendering of the property in question, but I'd like to see it in relation to the surrounding properties, especially since the bumper has been renewed.
Well, as any good land use attorney does, he brings extra exhibits. So I do have a satellite photo, if you're interested in seeing what surrounds the property, but we did mark that as an additional exhibit.
You can also, at this time?
No.
Okay, I ask from council.
Not at this time.
Good.
Thank you, then I'd call Dr. Ricardo, and, and, doctor, if you would, please state your name and current address, and could the doctor be seated, or would you like...
No, we'd like her, like, come up, sit, come up, sit right down here, we can get along. Thank you.
Doctor, your, your name and address?
John Ricardo, my residence 186 Heritage Court, Downingtown, Pennsylvania, 1933.
And are you the owner of the subject property?
I am.
Have we marked as exhibit A1 a copy of the deed to the property?
That is correct.
Do you and your wife Heather, seated here to my left, make up the members of Lair House, LLC?
We do.
And they essentially are the owners of the property, correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell the Borough Council about your plans for the subject property located at 361-363, and I'm going to put, but it's the previously marked as A3, on the easel behind me, to carry the roof?
Sure. So our existing building here, our existing building is located here in the orange. My plan is to take this area behind the building, place my medical office in the rear of the building, and have a parking area in between the existing structure and hopefully a new structure that would provide parking for both, both facilities.
Um, let me just identify for the record, after, the exhibit A3 is a colored rendering of the sites prepared by Architectural Concepts dated May 24, 2016. The office building to the rear would accommodate approximately 3, 400 square feet, correct?
That's correct, and that's where my medical office would be located.
And that's a single-story structure?
Single-story.
Um, there will be further testimony from our civil engineer, Mr. Gibbons, but with respect to traffic, and this kind of interweaves with expected patients to be seen. The traffic to be generated by this proposed use, can you please speak to that issue in the Borough Council on understanding of how many patients you expect to see, perhaps on an eight-hour day, and how in turn that would relate to the number of vehicle trips per day?
Sure. So my, my patient volume, right now, I, when I see patients on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, approximately 25, on a real good day, I might hit 30, but 25 patients a day over the time span of about, probably seven to eight hours time period. And those patients are scheduled every 15 minutes, so they are, they come in, have their business made, one's leaving and one's coming. So through the hour, four to five patients, four to five cars probably, now over that time period, that would be alternating, you know, all through the road into the park.
So, maybe my math was incorrect, but estimating between 25 and 30, on an eight-hour day, I got three to four, but perhaps it could be four to five an hour.
Yeah, someone comes to pick somebody up at an office, and it's not just, it's maybe an occasional extra trip for something else, and the office doesn't have to be as considered as...
Would you view that, I know you're not a traffic engineer, but as a layman, would you view that as a load generator traffic, as far as volume is concerned?
Yeah, absolutely.
With respect to the two other uses on the property, two apartments in the existing building, professional office, what do you expect with respect to those two uses and the types of trips they may generate?
The kind of office space that each one provides, I would assume that someone such as a professional, a legal professional, an accountant, insurance agencies that have been there in the past, small-volume kind of professional offices that will provide services, you know, on a one, on my own basis, it's not going, it's not a giant department, it's not a giant food store, in fact, it's going to be high-volume, it's going to be probably very low-volume areas, but...
I would expect the same with respect to the two apartments?
Right.
Load generator?
Right, any warning, how we can pack any night? What do you expect from our residents?
Sure, and, and you've been working on this plan with your architect and your engineer for several months. In your opinion, do you believe that the way the driveways are configured, that cars will be able to get in and out of the property easily onto business vehicles?
Yes, yes.
Um, you're here this evening to request conditional use approval from Borough Council in line with the sections I've referenced in my opening statement, correct?
That's correct.
And as I stated, Mr. Gibbons will be giving a little bit more detailed testimony with regard to the site and plan, correct?
Correct.
Those are all the questions I have right now for Dr. Ricardo.
All right, we'll start down here, any questions?
Um, yeah, just... You would be the only doctor practicing, I understand that you may have a, you may sometime bring in one, an associate?
Yeah, there may be an associate for small powers that I do.
Never at the same time?
Maybe a small overlap, but in a medical practice, it's not always, the office is not going to be big enough to have both of us running at the same time all the time, it just doesn't work that way.
As one of the conditions...
I do outpatient work as well as inpatient work in hospitals and nursing homes, as well as outpatient work in my health, so...
Um, this area is really in desperate need of traffic relief, as opposed to even the smallest additional traffic, as minor as it may be, as, as your representation, representation has pointed out, he's not a traffic engineer, would you be willing, as part of the conditional use, to have a traffic study done on that intersection?
If I could respond to that, during the zoning hearing board hearing, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I believe it's on the record, Mr. Yuha stated that a traffic impact study would be required at time of land development, not necessarily required as part of conditional use. So we have not prepared that traffic impact study at this point. Obviously, if the budget moves forward, it's an endeavor that Dr. Ricardo would have to go out with a team of traffic engineers at time of land development. That's all I have for now.
The same question I have, it's a very difficult, I use that road every day, and it's very difficult to get out and turn left, so it would be the same when you're turning right, as, when you get a left, right, right. Are you making any considerations for that, if you're turning right?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, something as simple as no left, no right turn, I'm sorry, no left turn, only right turn, makes total sense. no left turn, only right turn, makes total sense. You know, I had commented in one of, I feel like in me, I had commented on, you know, with some of my patients, I would rather they just make a right and move around the block, and it's pretty simple. That doesn't bother me at all to be serious. Now, that makes total sense.
You have eight beds, John, right? Examining rooms?
Well, the, the way it's structured, one of them is going to be a surgical suite, one of them is going to be where I do procedures. The other, I made some minor changes to where I have a staff lounge, but it'll probably be seven, counting the surgical suite. So really six examining rooms and one surgical suite to do procedures.
Procedure question for you, Mark. I thought that our conditional use ordinance was the, required the traffic study and not the land development. Usually, I don't necessarily think that this warrants a traffic study, however, this would be the time in which it would be presented, correct?
Yeah, I think traffic could be considered as an issue during conditional use. So if we were to make the request, we'd have to see the outcome. But I think traffic is an issue that can be considered a conditional use. I'm not sure if the ordinance requires the study at this stage, so.
Does the ordinance require traffic study at all?
In development.
In development, really? All right.
If I could just follow up with Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
It kind of surprised me as well, but if you look at the section of your ordinance on conditional uses, 287, 137, capital D as in David, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven criteria the Borough Council is supposed to review in these types of applications. Traffic is not mentioned. So I just hope to bring that to your attention.
Well, as this counsel has learned previously, that conditional use approval, so that forces out of the bar, so it's good to have all the information upfront. But I don't necessarily, I'm generally not specific to this.
I think we have several going on that we can look at. First of all, where it gets out and you see patients in fifteen minutes? I've never gotten out of doctor's office, actually. Never. Anyway. Fifteen minutes is wishful thinking. Are you aware, there was an eye doctor's office there before?
Yeah, a doctor.
Right. So there was an actual eye doctor's office with, with the traffic at one time, and I believe there was a doctor's office at one time next to or something?
Doctor Bruce. Doctor Bruce, the sixties.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I can remember that.
I'm saying, it was eye doctor's office there one time, but that's...
It was your principal, right?
Yeah. That's, I just, I was going to say, there was an eye doctor's office, so you failed to connection that.
Don't worry about it.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah?
So, one doctor, two, maybe some overlap. Any types of PAs or other medical practitioners that could be seen?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't get those.
I'm sorry, I spoke to him. That would be the overlap, a nurse practitioner.
Will there be any independent, I guess, non-medical doctor practitioners that see patients at this?
Yes, there will be, maybe a nurse practitioner. As of now, I do not have, it's, I'm, I'm, the expansion would be maybe to a nurse practitioner who would work all of my different hours in the night. So, yes.
Thank you.
Ann?
Yeah, so I'm looking at this, and you have six examination rooms?
Yes.
So there's just you.
Yes.
So that seems like a lot, that's very, I don't know, aggressive, that's another word, but that's, that's good. Six examination rooms would be busy. But the parking doesn't support six examination rooms. Now, my, one question here is how many employees are you going to be having, do you anticipate having? And I'm, not just now, I want to, I'm talking about in the future. You're projecting to having an associate, you're projecting to having a nursing assistant, physician assistant. Now, can you tell me your projection for the mathematical employees?
Sure. With this scenario I mentioned, there would be five.
Five employees?
Employees, there would be two in the front, well, including myself, nurse, doctor, maybe nurse practitioner, and two others in the front who run the office in the front.
Okay.
In medical terminology, it's called a micro-practice, meaning it's a smaller practice where more people, the less people do more. You know, takes certain insurances, they're on a very tight ship, and we want to keep it that way, survive the money as much as we can.
So, the, the existing building?
Yes.
That has two offices in there and then two apartments?
Two, one office, it needs to be like, one on each side and two apartments, one on each side. So on each side, there's an apartment above, and an office below.
So two offices?
Yes, two apartments.
Okay. So for that, the, I know, I didn't look to see what the parking requirements are for that, for those, that use of the building. Are you anticipating changing the uses of those offices and anything that's going to require more parking?
Now, I think we...
Are you familiar with the requirements at this point?
Yeah, when we did our calculations for parking and the fee-in lieu of situation that John had mentioned, our engineer and architect and myself, we looked at the square footage of each building and determined what the parking requirements were for each of those uses. So that's what we come up with, the number of thirty-four spaces, thirty-three spaces, whatever it may be that we calculated, and minus whatever, I think there's twenty-five that exists now. So we did that based on medical office being a certain amount of square footage, commercial space being a certain amount of square footage, control apartments, based on what the requirements were at each point.
Okay. Are you aware, and this is, I don't know if this is a question for you or not, but the current use of that existing building, was that given under conditional use? And was the parking, I guess the parking for the current use was adequate at that time? Or was there a fee-in lieu at that time? So what I'm looking at is, are we starting out in an deficit?
I believe your doctor there had the building, there was no issue with, I think he had adequate amount of parking, what I said, we talked about that, adequate amount of parking when it was the existing structure.
Okay.
And he has like an L-shaped parking lot right now that was, was, I do not know of any further requirements that he had to adhere to.
And so when I look at your square footage, your square footage is thirty-four hundred feet. What, do you know the square footage of the, of the current building? I can't really tell from this.
Yeah, let's see, I have it up here. Existing building, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two square feet. Proposed thirty-four hundred.
Okay.
Ann, can I inject one thing? There was no fee-in lieu of parking back at that time, just like...
Oh, is it?
Okay.
No, we put that in.
Thanks. Okay, so this building is significantly bigger than the existing building, but it is only one sort. So when I did the calculations, it's two hundred fifty square feet requires a spot, so that's fourteen spaces that your, your use would require. Says the gross area, and it is, you also, you have to have a spot for each employee.
Right, it's like, you know, there's, up in this box on the top of this, on the top of this exhibit?
Yeah, I can't see it.
There's a, there's a site data box in here that says, new medical office seventeen spaces, existing parking sixteen spaces, parking required thirty-three. So I guess new medical office seventeen was the number that they, we had calculated. Correct or wrong, I don't know, but I think that's what we did.
You'll hear from our civil engineer in a minute. We can have a conversation.
Yeah, because that's confusing as far as what's here in the Borough Code, but it doesn't seem, you get a lot of those things in that. Okay, so you have...
These are the best, Matt.
I'm going to take a look here, traffic, we did that, patient volume, we did that. Are you okay with, and I mean, we can do it anyways, but okay with limiting the use of, are you ever looking at changing the use of the existing building to a storefront or anything like that?
Oh, yeah.
And I think that we probably would have that to current use.
I think it's a good building, I don't know.
Okay. And are the office, the buildings, the notices are there right now, in the existing building, are those up to code to be used in the medical office, the doctor's office?
The existing building?
The existing building.
No, they, they changed uses from the time the doctor there had the property till, till now. There was a financial institution on one side, and on the other side was an insurance program, and before that was like a nursing office.
They like by, I remember by all the nurses.
Yeah, exactly. So, to answer your question, no, but I, I did first consider trying to use the bottom floor of that space, because there would be a beautiful old kind of doctor's office located. And the problem is, as the grade of the property goes down, I can't get patients seven feet up. It's very difficult for my elderly patients to go seven feet up with a rent that looks like Disney World or some kind of crazy, so I'm trying to accommodate my patients as well, to have an entry level that's on the ground. And that's, that's kind of like, we're triggered us to kind of like look to the back and say, what can we do? You know, I can't ask my patients to go up this crazy ramp.
I hope they had an elevator. Was there an elevator in there?
No, no, well, they did, they did, actually. They have this little elevator, I don't know if you call it that now, it's like a storage elevator now, the way it looks, that would probably not pass ADA code or anything like that.
Ann, can we go back to what, what we're doing now, this building, this thing? We're kind of going off track. That's okay.
I need to take Hyde to tell more about the existing building, or she was making decisions about the new building.
Thank you. Any more questions?
No, that's it for now.
All right. Next question?
Dr. Ricardo, before you sit down, I know Mr. Mozaluzi is probably sitting in the audience saying, "Why didn't he put up that beautiful rendering?" And I'm going to do that right now. We've marked this as applicant's Exhibit A2. Is it fair to say that that is a rendering of the building you propose to construct from the property?
That is correct.
Yeah, I see where the height comes in because of the price of that.
Can I say something about that?
Sure.
I think it's a beautiful building, but when, when it's presented to the Historical Commission, Ginny Pierce recommended that in keeping with the historical of a carriage house, that a cupola could be added. At that time, it was, I think, Mr. Mozaluzi said he would look into it. There was talk of perhaps repurposing an old cupola. I did a little search for myself, and I think that they're not, they're less expensive new, a brand-new one, that I would ask that perhaps that people have been to, to make, to further satisfy the recommendation of the Historical Commission.
Can I speak for that?
Sure.
So one of the things that Ted did do also was, he showed you pictures of various architectural structures in the borough, and based on his, his study of those structures, mixed stone and brick, mixed circular windows like I had in my, and I think did a wonderful job in trying to, to throw off this beautiful building with a cupola. Although it's a nice recommendation, I don't know where a cupola might go. I mean, I really don't.
Duly noted.
I love them a beautiful like it is.
As he lays on to that commission, and it was recommended, the earliest old recommendation that he would need to bring that up.
I just wanted to put on the record, Mike, and...
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Gibbons? Dave, you've been sworn, so I'll ask you to please state your name and current business address.
David Gibbons, 1250 Lights Lane, Westchester PA, 1938.
And are you employed, and if so, in what capacity?
I am DL Howlett Associates, I'm a senior engineer.
Are you a registered engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Have we introduced your CV as applicant's Exhibit A5 in our packet?
I believe so, yes.
I would offer Mr. Gibbons as the next expert civil engineer. Is the Board of any questions for Mr. Gibbons?
Not specific to this. You're asking for...
Well, question being, qualified as an expert, Mr. Gibbons, he testified in other hearings for zoning hearing boards and townships and boroughs?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make that offer noted. Thanks. Dave, did you assist in preparation of site plan for the subject property that Dr. Ricardo and his wife proposed with respect to the construction of an additional building on the property?
Yes, I did.
Is that the site plan in the color of the form prepared by Architectural Concepts we're going to do?
Yes.
We have marked that as applicant's Exhibit A3, have we not?
That's correct.
Could you please, utilizing that, if you, Borough Council was planned for the property, now the second building will be laid out with regard to attendant parking in the lot?
Sure. With regard to Exhibit A3, which we have Lancaster Avenue on the left-hand side, which is also the south side of the property, we have two existing, I'm sorry, one ingress point and one egress point that will remain as existing points of access. As the doctor testified earlier, the existing building is shown in a light orange color. The proposed building is shown and pushed back as far possible to the rear of the lot and is shown in a tan yellowish color. The parking in between the two buildings has been reconfigured to provide for thirty-three parking spaces.
Dave, the property is located in the Far Four Residential District of the Borough, correct?
Correct.
Pursuant to Section 287, 32D2, offices for professional use in accordance with the Area and Bulk Regulations, Section 287, 48, are permitted by conditional use, correct?
That's correct.
Section 287, 48 essentially refers to area bulk departments in the C3 district, does it not?
C3, yes.
Could you please go through Section 287, 48A3K and advise the Borough Council what requirement is and what the applicant has provided with respect to those individual criteria?
Sure. The minimum lot area is twenty thousand square feet. We have thirty thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. The minimum lot width of the building line is required to be ninety feet. The existing lots combined have a total of one hundred feet. The front yard building setback is forty feet. We have an existing non-conformity setback with the existing building at thirty-seven point one feet. The minimum side yard is fifteen feet. We will leave combined with that at fifteen feet. The minimum rear yard is twenty-five feet. The rear yard structure will be twenty-five feet from the rear line. The maximum building coverage is twenty percent. We are proposing currently nineteen point zero eight percent. Maximum other coverage would be required at sixty percent. We are proposing forty-six point one seven percent. The minimum vegetative coverage would be ten percent required. We are proposing thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-four point seven five percent. The maximum building height is thirty-five feet. Currently, we will be less than thirty-five feet, I believe it's thirty-three feet, eight inches to the ridge line. The minimum buffer adjacent to a residential use is ten feet. We have an existing non-conformity at zero feet because of the driveway, the driveway is basically way on the lot line. However, we did get a variance as you spoke to earlier, and we're proposing a five foot buffer for the new parking.
With the exception of the non-conformity in the existing building and the variance obtained, the proposal then will comply with the area bulk requirements of the C3 district, correct?
That's correct.
I'd like you to focus a moment on the fee-in lieu of parking issue. Did you have conversations with the town, with Borough zoning officers, Yuhas, with respect to required number of parking spaces?
Yes.
Could you and he come to an understanding of what the required number of parking spaces would be on this site for this proposal?
Yes.
What is that number?
Based on the existing parking being provided, sixteen spaces, Mr. Yuhas stated that that is what would be required for the existing facility. And then with the proposed office of thirty-four hundred square feet, that would require fourteen spaces. And then at the time, there was discussion that there would be three employees, so that would be seventeen for the new medical office. Total required would be thirty-three spaces. We'll propose on the plan currently is twenty-five spaces.
So to reiterate, thirty-three required for all uses involved, we're providing twenty-five, if my math is correct, for eight spaces short, correct?
That's correct.
Now, Section 287, 107G of the Borough zoning ordinance has a provision, and it does it not, that the applicant can take advantage of a fee-in lieu?
That's correct.
In other words, if they cannot provide the full complement of parking, and they feel that what they can provide is sufficient to address the uses proposed, they can offer the fee-in lieu, correct?
That's correct.
First, do you feel that twenty-five, based on your experience, that will be sufficient parking to handle for the medical office, the department office?
Based on the doctor's earlier testimony about the number of patients, in my opinion, I do feel...
And is it your understanding then, with the eight spaces that we would be short, that there is a fee set by resolution in the Borough to be applied?
That's correct.
And is it your understanding that fee is... And again, utilizing my math skills, eight times 2,500 equals $20,000, correct?
Right.
You heard Dr. Riccardo's testimony with respect to vehicle trips from this proposed medical office use. And based on your experience, would you tend to agree with Dr. Riccardo's testimony and so on?
I would agree. Based on his testimony, we have 25, roughly 25 patients in a 78-hour day. We would have the rental pool of cars an hour averaged out. So, with that being said, I would feel the number of parking spaces provided, is that correct?
Have you reviewed the general standards for conditional use approval in section 287137d of the Borough zoning ordinance?
I have.
Do you have an opinion as to whether or not this application as presented is compliant with those standards A through G of that section?
I do, and I feel that our proposed application is compliant with those applicable standards.
Very good. Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Gibbons at this time.
All right. We'll start you out with that.
Okay. So, I'm looking at the Borough Code here, and as far as the fee and lieu, it actually talks about a percentage where, if business provides 75%, or not 200%, or 50%, so the fee is different based on the amount, the percentage of parking that you're deficient. So, did you, and it looks like you're deficient, 25% of it, or?
I agree. I think Mr. Yuhas stated that we were in that category.
Okay. And so, because you were saying just $2,500 per space, is that what that, that was my understanding of this? Which I thought was super flat rate. I didn't know if that changed with the scale as far as the percentage that's, like, the less parking you're able to provide or the more deficient you are, the more that is charged.
Correct. Based on the numbers, and again, I stand to be corrected, my calculation was in providing 25 spaces of 33 required, we would have been 77% big.
Right. I think it would be 76%.
And that in turn would require X and not a combination of X plus a fraction. So, that's where, when you apply the $2,000, it's X times the eight, that's where we got the 23.
That's correct.
And if that doesn't mean it will be adjusted, it will be correct.
Sure.
If the scale is off, you'll need to scale as per the code you're having to crack the map. Right. Okay. So, we can just take that off.
We're trying to impress the Borough Council with math.
So, I need you to walk me through this a little bit because this, because you're going with the C3 district, but isn't this, didn't you start out saying that this is the residential district?
It's a good question, Ed. We are in the R4 district. When you go to the R4 district with use requirements, you'll find under section 28732d2, offices for professional, general, or governmental use in accordance with the area and bulk regulations of section 28748 are permitted. 28748 are those area and bulk requirements for the C3 district, and that's how we got there.
Does it have a zone height and all, and who setbacks?
Correct.
And the street and the number of parking spots? Parking spots? Okay. I don't have any more questions at this time.
Ted?
Based on the testimony we heard from the doctor, aren't the numbers up far off? When initially the numbers were looked at, needed 14 spots plus the amount of employees that were projected to be there, which would indicate as three, meaning 17, now we deterred that there could be up to six. Which would make the deficiency now 11 spots, not eight.
Again, in my experience, parking is always a bit of a struggle based on what you anticipate at the time you make application versus what may happen in the future. So, I think we're going to go with the testimony based on the parking requirements as we calculated that if something changes in the future, we're going to have to address them.
And these are the numbers that we're going to work with now, which is what you're predicting for professional?
Correct.
And? Anything else, Ted?
Nope.
Alex at this time?
Just one quick question. Do you have no issue with the fee and lieu amount?
Oh, of course. You wouldn't. You're a doctor.
No, but I, we understand that that's what is part of this process.
Yeah, just Jeff's comment.
I believe our parking ordinance is written based on square footage of building and the use specifically. So, when they calculate their parking, it's based on square footage of the property. And that money, the fee and the parking that gets paid goes into a shared parking fund, not the Borough General Fund, and goes to pay for public parking for the community. So, that's how we work it out because the apartments and the offices, we use the parking spaces at different times. We take advantage, allow for small business owners like this to come into our community, move in, and then this issue of parking is, we take that money invested into our public parking, so the tax person can give that money. And I just wanted to let everyone know that parking is based on square footage, and that money, thanks to Dr. Riccardo's goodwill of coming into our community and opening up this small business, is also investing in shared parking in all places of the community at the same time.
What are you saying is your ultimate idea?
Plumber speak.
That's what he's saying.
Could you just talk to me about the others? Are they all residential homes? Are there any businesses next door? You heard from the names.
To the, to these is a residential home. See, the east is a residence. To the west would be, it's a group home. I'm trying to think of the name of the owner. But it's a group home. That's there. Ever since I was going over.
And the rear?
Oh, sorry. And the rear is a grass, a yard. Then there's a parking lot that I believe is the parking lot for St. James Retirement Village or Retirement Home or Independent or Personal Capital.
Commercial.
Commercial. I think that's all the borders. I don't think there's anything else.
And for the record, I just handed up a copy of Chesko, Chesko Hughes, a photograph. The property itself is marked in red, and those are the two lots that make up this property. And you can see the surrounding area.
Okay.
You want that marked as exhibit? Want to call A6? A6, please.
It's great, because you can see the parking.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Oh.
At what part of this process, I'm sorry, did we talk about stormwater management?
Stormwater management was handled. Trump's not here. It will be in terms of, I'm thinking that my mom, it sounds here. That's our stormwater guy. Tom, please explain to Phil when the stormwater will kick in and it'll have to, have to.
We have an entire order.
I'm sorry, Tom.
Thomas Yuhas, Y-U-H-A-S. The compliance with the stormwater ordinance is required to be followed through the land development process.
Good. Okay, Tom?
Yeah, my concerns generally are traffic issues and, and stormwater control addressing land development.
Okay, great. All right. Any more witnesses?
That essentially is our application, our testimony support there, so I would move applicant exhibit A1, three ways, and evidence, please.
I don't think there's any objections. I will make those adjustments. I just ask if anyone has any comments.
Ready to carry me?
I have some more. I have a couple of questions, which one is a?
For that witness?
What?
Do you have a question on witness also?
I can ask a civil idea. I can ask an attorney. I could, I could, to counsel.
That's fine, and we'll call back up.
I have a concern about the, what Counselor Dave said, the stormwater management, and I do believe it's appropriate to discuss that here during the initial hearing because we need to make sure that it is going to be taken care of. And I also would like to discuss the conditions. This is a conditional use. This isn't a use by right. This is a conditional use, in which case this is an opportunity for the council to set conditions for the use. And I think that some of the conditions we need to look at would be at things that would benefit the community as a whole. So, if, if looking at stormwater management that's going to benefit the surrounding community is a good thing, this is a time to look at it. This is a time to require anything of this applicant. If we want to look at a traffic study, this is, I think, an appropriate time to require it of the applicant. If we want to look at having a crosswalk installed, which I think is a really great idea, we need to look at crosswalks, and I would like to find out about any traffic control devices since we're going to be bringing in so much more traffic, a significant amount more traffic as far as traffic control device in this area. So, I would like to discuss those things. And Mr. President, you can certainly help direct me as far as which witness to pass out.
You can. Do you have any questions for this witness at this time?
If you can answer any of those questions, those are popular.
Regret to stormwater management. We have not fully designed stormwater yet. That is something we usually reserve during land development. It's costly, so if the project doesn't move forward, it's something we finalize during land development, land development process with the Borough Engineer. However, for feasibility purposes, we have gone out, Dr. Riccardo did spend the money to have us do infiltration testing. Infiltration's usually one of the key things. We did two tests toward the middle of the property that had favorable infiltration rates. So, with that being said, I'm confident that we can meet the Borough's stormwater management ordinance and have no plan not to do the land development process.
Okay. Because I see that maybe you're going to be putting it on the outside perimeter or something, because if I'm not mistaken, the assisted living housing, the St. James Place, is actually lower, it goes down, it's a lower grade, lower level than this property. Is that correct?
It is slightly lower than our property, so it now does flow off the back property line onto their property. However, what we will be doing is we'll be providing infiltration. We'll be providing that over the parking area. And then, as I stated to the Borough Engineer, we may look at also doing some small water quality feature in the back of the building, but primarily remain stormwater management facility.
And do the water table and all, can support that?
Support our test shit.
Okay. And then as far as the, we talked about the traffic study, but we don't have a traffic engineer, and you said it's not required. But the crosswalk that's here and just the whole, that whole general area, it's a little bit of a dangerous intersection because people are trying to turn into traffic. There's no, there's no traffic light, there's no stop sign. I don't really know the correct way to approach this as far as maybe it's our Borough Manager, but as far as looking at getting a traffic control device in the area, and if we did that, I would think that would be something that the applicant would need for to have if it's a, whether it's a high visibility crosswalk, whether it's putting a stop sign, whether it's putting in an actual traffic light. But I would like to explore that because that is an intersection that is very tricky. And when you're going to be adding people in and coming out every hour, you're, you really are changing the character and the way that that whole area works. And I don't think we can enter into this very lightly. I think we really need to examine it closer.
Can I, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Number one, as I stated earlier, the criteria to be utilized in this application is not the car parking space. Number two, you've heard the recommendation made that this is going to be what we typically in the industry call a low-volume generator. We're talking about six to eight cars per hour, if that. We don't consider that a high-volume generator. I travel that intersection every day, go from my home to my office in my building. At times, it can get congested during the morning PMB go. I think people deal with it. We personally don't feel this would warrant any type of traffic control device. And most importantly, if you determine that it, you aren't the ultimate determiners of that. It's a state highway, the state determines. So, if you said, we think it warrants a stop sign, state says, you have to meet warrants for a stop sign. You determine that you did a traffic signal, the state will say, no, it has to meet warrants for a traffic signal. I've been doing this for a number of years, and I can tell you that this use in no way would generate any type of traffic control device at this proximity. The crosswalk, I'm not very familiar with, I'm not going to speak to that. But with respect to if Borough Council were considering imposing a condition of a traffic control device because of this use and its low-volume traffic generation, I think I speak for the doctor that probably would eliminate its desire for the full. First, any?
There's Stephen Ross. Anything else, Ed?
No, I'll just remind counsel, I'm not trying to be disrespectful or anything, but the, but you know, we, this is a conditional use, and it's not that we need an additional building to put in. So, you know, we need to look at, we need to look at the bigger picture. So, it's not trying to make it difficult for you, but trying to make it beneficial to the community.
Thank you for still, do you have any more questions for any other witnesses? We'll.
I do have a question for you.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
It looks really tight here. Would one of our fire trucks, in your opinion, have any issues getting down the driveway?
Say, the existing access drive scales to be roughly 11 feet. I do believe we're proposing to widen that to make it 12 feet for one-way traffic. Obviously, the straight section fire truck is typically eight and a half feet wide or maybe a little wider, but it wouldn't have any, any problems going down those straight sections. We have tried our best to make the radius around the curves as wide as possible. Like you said, it is a tight site, and we're working with what we have, what we have provided for 24-foot wide drive aisles on both sides. So, we can definitely take a look at fire truck turn movements and make sure we can make that, make that turn, but it is, it's tight side.
I mean, right now, there's no reason for a fire truck, a field fire or something like that, but with the new building, obviously, something we definitely would look at.
Dave, just correct me if I'm wrong, but is there an existing parking lot to the rear of our lot that if, in fact, an emergency fire vehicle had a problem entering the site to fight a fire on the new building, it could get into the existing parking lot?
You are correct, yes, there is an existing parking lot to the rear. We'll be close enough, within 150 feet to get those two, yes.
That's probably what I'm stating, or if I'm actually correct, with all the alarms, everything will be in fire suppression that's needed to distinguish. I think, Tom?
I don't know that it would require, because it would not require a fire suppression. I don't think, but it certainly would be compliant for its size and use.
I see one more thing for the engineer here, which is handicap parking. I see two handicap parking spots for the new building, but I don't see any handicap behind the existing building. I believe right now there's one, but I don't see that that is being, being kept. So, is that going to actually reduce the number of parking spots you have here if you add that a handicap spot? I don't know how many handicap spots you need for the existing building, but I've seen one here.
We did discuss that, I believe, at a Borough meeting, and it was determined that we would only need two, two handicap parking spaces.
Well, that serves your new building, but what about the existing building?
I don't think so. I think it's based on the total number of parking spaces on that.
I think that that's, that would be something that would make a good condition too, because that doesn't serve, if you have, yeah, no. If that building by itself would require, would that building by itself require a handicap spot? And if it does, I think that needs to be maintained, retained. And if it does, I think that needs to be maintained.
Is the existing building handicapped accessible?
Has a handicap spot.
Building itself has a handicap accessible. That whole elevator that was in the one side, like I said, right now, we probably would not be able to. So although, I have a little bit of a spot, one way, I'm assuming it will remain. So I don't know how they, I think that would be based on everything that that elevator that was built in that area. There's a small elevator in that corner that looks like a storage elevator, probably wheelchair, assuming.
I'm just talking about really the requirements. If a handicap spot is required for that existing building, then I would want to make sure that it's maintained. I would want to have that taken away and then moved over to the other building. Because even if you have somebody with an electric wheelchair who can ride around the front of the building, they still need a place to park, and they don't want to be tucked down, parked all the way to the other end. So, yeah.
Any other questions, Ed?
Council?
All right. I just have one question, just so we're clear on the record. The proposed use for the front building or buildings, what would be that use?
Another professional office. Yeah, I would assume that the folks that, that space would be probably attracted to someone like a lawyer, accountant, insurance broker, someone of that.
And the apartments would remain on the second floor?
Yes.
Sir, you requested party status. Do you have any questions, Ed?
He's got to come up. He has a little presentation that he wants to do, so he has party status, so I think this is really complicated. Thank you.
I'm Jamie Burton. We made fun of you this morning.
We might as well.
If you wanted it to be considered evidence, then you should.
So I'm Jamie Burton, 403 East Langston Avenue. My wife's standing. I appreciate you have maintained your employer, my fingers. So I wanted to start off by saying that I think the building looks very nice, and I think it's very appropriate for our section of town. And I did meet with Dr. Ricardo several months ago. We talked about the project, and so it all looked great. I was not able to attend the planning commission meeting, and at that point in time, my concern is, while we are here for two conditions, one for parking and one for the R4 district. And the R4 district is single-family, two-family, multifamily units. And under that zoning, it says, "Any conditional use. If you meet these certain requirements, you can go through the conditional use process." And after serving on council for 12 years, the conditional use process does say, "Well, what are some things that, what conditions do we need to place on this?" So while I did support, I do support the project, I do feel that at this point in time, the only condition that is met is a fee level of parking. And after many years on council, I can think of many times when a certain developer, business owner, whoever it might be, would come before the council and say, "This is what I want to do." The one that sticks out in my mind is because we worked on it so long, it was Green Street View, and adding South Down Homes or wherever Sarah Peck was, redo the whole stormwater management system over there. And while the project necessarily didn't impact that, for less than her, she didn't exacerbate the problem, it was obviously an issue that the borough needed addressed. And so in this situation, you have a beautiful office building, but you're turning an R4 residential community into something a little bit different by putting a 3,500 square foot medical building in your backyard, which is fine. And I think it's going to look nice. However, it will forever change the nature of that neighborhood. And my family does enjoy that yard and all these other things that go along with that. Being said, I do feel that given the precedent of other projects in the borough, the council does need to think about, "Well, what's going on here?" Ultimately, the developer or the business owner will receive a very nice property that will mature in value over time, and in the end, you could turn it around in two years, sell it, 10 years, sell it, whatever it might be, because that's an entrepreneurial activity. And I don't take anything away from that. The flip side, however, is what did the borough receive for that? We have an intersection of Chestnut Street and Lancaster Avenue where in the last 10 years, two people died because of whatever it might be, poor signaling, whatever might happen. And your attorney has correctly said, you know, the state may require this, but every time we do a traffic study, every time that the borough has to buy streetlights and other infrastructure, it costs all of these people a little bit of money. And that's the point of conditional use. If you want to go outside the box a little bit, we absolutely allow you to do that. However, there should be some conditions, some stipulations that says, "We will move forward on that." And right now, the borough does need an improvement in that intersection. And I don't think that we should require the physician to go ahead and pay for the entire thing, but maybe some things should be considered toward that because that is what we've done in the past. We just went through a conditional use hearing for that sign that's over there on bypass. And the borough actually received, I think, looking at that, some substantial conditions upon it. Apparently, in over 25 years, there's a significant amount of revenue that ultimately helps offset the tax payers. Because every year comes visit time, you guys sweat over where are you going to find 25 grand or 75 grand, and you worry that what that military increase will do to that person living on Social Security or Mary Street because they can't afford to swing it. And so this process, when you think, "Okay, we have a bad intersection. We've got something that needs to be fixed." And as a conditional project, I do not think it would be inappropriate to ask for something and think about that. Unfortunately, we're here in the borough council debating this, I think taking some time to think about it. I do not want to turn away a small business center. As president of council, I sat in that seat trying to attract businesses to town. It's a partnership, and I think there's an answer here. So, you know, running people out of town because we go ahead and say, you know, "You have to pay for some outrageous amount," that's not true. But there is a middle ground here. And I'd just like to leave you with that because it's a balancing act that you're in. I hope you find the right balance to what is fair and appropriate for this property because I think it's the right building. I think it's a beautiful site, but I think right now it's a little bit, we need to be thinking about what conditions can be met to help improve that little section without being too or some of the development.
Jamie, can I just talk for a while? We don't work. Let him finish.
I'm done.
Okay. Anybody have questions? Phil? Ed?
Well, we won't know anything until we have the traffic study back, right?
Well, you won't. And while it's appropriate that you said you don't need to do the traffic study because the site is not warranted, I understand that. But the borough might need it to go ahead and actually go ahead and say, "What are our list of things that we have to do?" So as council people, it's a very, did an excellent job in saying, "Our project doesn't need it, the council has to say what we do." Okay? And as I said, that's the negotiating side. I don't need to be a stick in the mud. I don't want to derail the project, but I do want you to think about these in detail. And just take some time and think about it. I'm fine with whatever you decide. I've said my piece, and that's it.
Last one, a question. Josh?
Yeah. Mr. Burton.
Yes.
You've looked at this intersection more than just anybody living there, decided to raise children there, good conditional use hearings with River Station, you've looked at traffic sites on this intersection before. You've studied that and you've learned about them. What specifically would improve that intersection? You looked at one-way streets for a while.
Yeah, there's all sorts of really low-impact ideas, like the, well, low-impact because that's going to have a big impact. But I do think for the down Chestnut Street, one of the ideas that would be relatively simple and maybe powerful to everybody would be to make Chestnut Street a one-way street so that you could only turn down Chestnut Street, you could not turn up. When that woman died at Chestnut Street, the gentleman was driving a large truck with what they call, is that what they call it? I think that's what it was. And he was a guy who lived on Pennsylvania Avenue.
That's the one that happened like one o'clock in the morning or something?
No, no, that was the drunk driver that hit the lady.
I remember one.
Right. But this guy was just making a right-hand turn. When you're coming out Chestnut, you make the right-hand turn, you're looking left. All right? So he was looking left because he was wondering about the traffic. He turned, and some woman was walking down the library, got clipped, and went under the wheel, and she died. And that was like three, four years ago. I was still in council, so I knew five or six. But it was a while ago, but it was tragic. That being said, that person wasn't pulling out. There's an extreme example, but it happens. If you were turning out Lancaster Avenue, if you redirected traffic back on Jefferson to take a right and then make a left on Whitley to go up 113, that might be a way to alleviate traffic. The other big point that someone mentioned was, I mean, where, Dr. Eileen, when school lets out, it's a disaster in there. I mean, you have one of the parents drive out on the Chestnut Street, and they try to make the left on Lancaster Avenue. That's the end because soon as that person tries to turn left on Lancaster, like everything just stops and you get backed up and you got that traffic pattern that you have in the morning. So one of the ideas is just make it only entry off of Lancaster Avenue and make it a one-way. You come down Chestnut, you hit Jefferson, and you have to make a right or a left, and I think you can't take a left. So that was one of the easy ones. One of the more difficult ones, of course, it takes an elevated pendant. Does pendant require a traffic? And that might be what ends up happening ultimately for the benefit of the residents of this borough. That might be the safest thing to do, could pay out and look great. But I don't know. I don't know if that, once you start getting to those levels of traffic patterns, it gets complicated.
Yeah, just something here, just two things. One, you were right when you said the planning commission would be the way to make conditional recommendations. You started that trend when you were council president, you built the planning commission. Those recommendations come to council, and it's easier.
Anecdotally, can I explain something?
However, I think that you do have an avenue to talk about these things, and I would suggest reaching out to the Main Street Association, this is part of our Main Street District, and talk about an overarching macro-level traffic distribution for a center of town. That might be a good place to talk about it. I don't know if an independent, small medical doctor has the economic engine to try some of these changes, but we do, like the Main Street Association, you can start.
It may not be the economic engine, I'm not asking for the entire thing.
Right.
Think about everything possible, a contribution toward funding or something.
Okay. I agree.
Jamie, I have a couple of questions. Did you met with the doctor? How did that conversation go?
It was very positive.
Asked for any concessions from them? Anything you wanted from or didn't like?
So what I was looking at is eventually that whole area could go commercial. I was looking for an easement, perhaps.
So you're considering maybe that easement's on your property to go commercial too?
Sure.
Okay. That was one. Any more, or just yours?
No. And then nothing came of that conversation, but that's okay.
Okay.
I'm more here because I've talked to many people in the audience, and I think that it is want to make sure that what is done here helps solve a problem. And when you look at the other projects that we've done throughout the borough, we've always looked for that, and we've always looked for a fair balance. I don't want to chase anybody away.
And you know, Jamie, you're right because we worked in the theme of bringing these businesses to town. So we could go to town and help get more people to come in, possibly people to go to that doctor's office, stop and get something with shop and do whatever. Everybody go there, it's the same, they may not feel well, but they're not real bad. So that's why we did the flood, if they in lieu. That or on Green Street, Jamie, if you remember.
We waved 50 pushes, 50 pushes, we could have gotten the park.
And we fought for the flooding, we got the money for the flooding because that was in the floods though. That's why we got that money, and we held our feet to the fire to help.
Chip, I didn't leave you here.
No, I'm just saying, that's why we did it. We helped part, I'd just like to tell the whole thing why we did get it. Other than that, I don't have any questions this time. Alex? Josh?
No, thank you very much, though, for your continued listening. Absolutely great to know about the traffic, I think, and the traffic studying.
Oh, yeah. And the other thing is, Steve, how many traffic studies do we have going on this time? I know we met with pendant, the pendant's in the process of doing one of the whole area because of bypass. So there is one going on, we're doing one on Woodbine Road for that area, there's two. Sarah Peck's going to have to do one when she does back there, correct, if we do part and part?
I think that was one of the requests, that the three traffic studies for the same intersection. So I mean, I know they're off their way.
And he's adding, right, he's adding five cars or so to the hour. They could probably throw them on, we can go.
And that's the point.
Instead of making him do that, I mean, it's really, it's hard.
It's not about the volume there. It's about what the borough needs.
I agree 100%. Any more questions for Jamie this time? Because I believe we have a fellow back there who raised it. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thanks, kids. Good job. I'm sorry, yeah, did you want to walk up, please? Thank you. Thanks for being patient, I know you raised it again. Appreciate you.
If you wanted what you said to me, you could say that.
He said.
My name's Tom Hudecek. H U D E C H E C K. I'm not a resident of downtown, I'm a resident of West Bradford.
Can you give your address and look it up in the record?
1348 Ridgeview Circle.
Sure. Get it right there.
I'm a member of St. James Church. I'm a member of the best of St. James. I'm in the property committee chair of St. James Church. We have, we enjoy the community we live in, and we share, and we take care of people in the community. We have a good outreach program in there, but we have a couple of concerns. One thing I'd like to say first, and I think everybody would agree with me. We enjoyed riding down Route 30 from Green Street to 113. And from 113 to Green Street, that's the historical section of downtown. And I think we enjoy seeing how well the houses are maintained down there, and it's a good area. That's the only area in this town that's historic. And luckily, we're part of that. St. James Church is part of that. So I think you'd all agree to that. And, you know, I took a look at the building. I refer to it as the variance building because it didn't meet the requirements on that piece of ground, so there were variances when I was at that hearing. I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with is we live in the valley here, and we know that we don't have too much more impervious soil to give up because of where we live. And we have a problem in this area with stormwater management. So that's something we're concerned with back there. St. James Place, when they built that, they have a retention basin back there, and it takes care of the runoff from St. James property, plus the parking routes back there at St. James Church and St. James Place. But there's a lot of water that goes through that area. The area between, you know, I'd invite council to take a ride back there, in the parking lot there. And as you do back there in that parking lot, you'll see the back of the doctor's property right there. And with the addition of impervious soil on this property, the runoff coming back there will not get, there's no swell back there to take that water away. The water would run off in that property, it's a flat area back there before you get to a raised retention basin, which is part of the St. James Place. The reason I mention this is back there, we have two other apartment complexes before you get to lake number one back there. So you have a lot of water runoff from that, too. St. James Place has addressed that problem for our place with piping underground to get to that, to lake, back down to the lake to get that water out of there. Here, you're going to have water from, I forget the amount of square footage of that lot going back there, but it's going to be running into a flat area of grass. We're concerned about that because ponding water today is a concern with the Zika virus, mosquitoes and all that back there. I think that would be a concern. So when we talk about stormwater management, not taking PERC tests on somebody's property, but doing a stormwater management test back there, I think that's important to the borough because right now, the burden of stormwater management is on the borough and the taxpayers of downtown. So that's a small area, but, you know, you got to address it now. This is a chance to, for borough council to come up with some conditions that make common sense, is what I'm saying. The other thing, I know because I get stuck in traffic there all the time, somebody's coming, Chestnut Street to me is a highway between Lancaster Avenue, Route 30, and Boot Road. Or it's a highway from Lancaster Avenue to Victory Brewing. You get a lot of traffic on that road. And I know, I see the townie kids have to walk to school. It's the way it is to Eastward. So there is a crossing guard down at the next street below, but I see the kids going across that, across Chestnut Street to the front side of.